Okay, let's call the meeting for order. Pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GL Chapter thirty A, Section eighteen, extending remote participation through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty seven. Meetings at the Berkshire Hills School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and in role. Agenda items listed of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, not all I have listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB School Committee Recorder and the Berkshire Ed and will be broadcast at a later date. We'll start with a roll call since we have a virtual number. Allison.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Andy.
Right.
Bill.
Present.
Bill.
Here.
Diana.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Rich.
Here.
And Steve is here. We have minutes from June twelfth, two thousand twenty five, June sixteenth, two thousand twenty five, restful meeting. Do I have one more?
Sooner.
Shall I say, I have a motion, I am the second by Bill Fields. Discussion. Roll call vote. Allison.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Andy.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I, your name is. Turn it right over to the superintendents.
Okay, so we don't have students with us in the summer, uh, so we'll start right with the principals. Cynthia, in a shift of events, let's start with you and then, and then we'll, we'll work our way up.
Happy Summer Hall.
Hello.
The good news and the challenge is that, um, we don't have students in the building really, the whole, everybody's not there. So, um, I get a lot of work done at work. We do have, we had extended school year in the building and our CLEO program was going on at the middle school. Um, I have had an opportunity to do some interviewing and some hiring. And, um, I have hired a third grade teacher who has lots of previous experience as actually a principal, as a reading coach, as, and as a third grade teacher. So, um, Diana Lucia will be on our third grade team, which I'm very excited about. And, uh, I have also hired three career professionals. Three career professionals, um. The challenging news is that I still have five career professionals to hire. Um, and summer's great, so.
All right, Jake.
You know, I will not be that brief.
Can you promise?
Christopher is texting me furiously, keep it short.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you're having a good summer. Uh, we just wanted to congratulate our eighth graders with a great, uh, eighth grade graduation, um, on, uh, June twelfth, or not on June twelfth, on, on the Friday before graduation was the day after the last school committee meeting. Um, great group of kids, we wish them well in, uh, whatever they're doing next. Most of them are headed up to Monument and, uh, and they're gonna do great things out there. Um, like Cynthia, we just wrapped up a really solid and good and positive ten days of CLEO camp at Du Bois. We hosted, um, the first through, through eighth grade camp and it was, uh, we had fifty kids. Um, and it was just terrific to have, uh, all of those kids. It's, it's, the school building gets real old real fast when it's just grownups in it, so it was really nice to have the kids in. Um, we all really enjoyed having the little ones, uh, over with us and, uh, it was nice to get to show them around their, their future middle school. And, uh, the team of people that made that work, they started planning for it in January and it was a terrific two weeks. It was Molly Murray from the elementary school and then our staff Brennan Heck, Jennifer Garen, Sydney Carl, Paul Beasley, and Matty Godden. Um, we're really grateful to them for the experience they gave to our kids. Um, our food service team was terrific, you know, we have a couple of different programs running in the school, including CLEO. So we're really grateful to our food service team for, uh, welcoming the kids, making sure they're energized. And, uh, you know, for our custodial team to work around, um, yeah, having fifty kids in the summer with their shoulders are really able to get reset for next year. I really appreciated their flexibility and, uh, just helping out. And we also had Monument Mountain student interns who were just terrific. Um, talked to a few kids about teaching as a, as a, uh, possible career choice. They, uh, they just really added to the energy and they did a really nice, nice job of, uh, supervising and keeping kids safe. They're really facilitating a lot of, um, learning and especially social emotional learning. Um, and then we, we'd like to thank the, the educators that worked with our two extended year programs that are going on for a few more weeks. Um, these are special education programs that extend the school year for students. And, uh, we're really grateful to host, uh, a few kids from the high school and a student from Southern Berkshire in our program. And, uh, we're, we're glad that they're gonna be with us for a couple more weeks. And Lisa Parchman, I don't know if you know Lisa, Lisa is a substitute nurse, uh, at Du Bois. And she is our summertime nurse and it was eye opening for me to have elementary school kids in the building. We went through more ice packs in two weeks than we had gone through the entire hundred eighty day school year. With bumps and bruises and straights and, uh, so we're really grateful for Lisa and, uh, and her help. Uh, in, in terms of challenges, nothing in particular, our, our, we have a little bit of hiring left to do. We had a, a retirement, um, come in this week. It's not one that was entirely unexpected. So we are looking for a fifth grade teacher. Uh, we're very confident we'll be able to fill that. So I, I don't really see that, that as a challenge. It's a, it's an opportunity for one of our colleagues to have a hopefully a, a long and happy retirement and opportunity for us to bring in a new colleague. Uh, I will say though, yes, I'm getting ready to start my thirty second school year and my twenty seventh school year as an administrator. Um, and as somebody that's always tried to focus on being kind and patient and modeling the work ethic and the character that I like, like the people around me to, uh, emulate. I, I find myself sometimes just, just feeling a bit weighed down by, um, seeing so much that we hold sacred in our country feel like it's under attack. Uh, and institutions that we thought were, were, um, pretty safe and pretty secure, um, coming under attack and, and, and in some cases being wholesale eliminated. So we are just really going to redouble our efforts in Du Bois, uh, this year to make sure all of our families, all of our kids know that we count them as neighbors and as friends, um, no matter who they are or where they're from. And, uh, we are going to keep on, you know, leading and learning with, with love and respect and doing what we do. And gonna really, really work hard to, um, to just work on a daily basis to, to instill hope and confidence in our teachers and the worthiness of our mission as public school educators. Um, I feel like public schools are really, um, really under attack right now in, in, in some pretty blatant ways and in some insidious ways. And I think we are just really among the most sacrosanct pillars of what holds our democracy up. And, uh, we're gonna remind our teachers of that as frequently as possible. That, uh, no matter what is happening outside, uh, of our control, um, we are proud and grateful to educators here in Berkshire Hills and, and we're gonna do our best with the kids we have every day. That's all from me.
Thank you very much. Great. Uh, so now Christopher is joining us online. Uh, go ahead, Christopher, tell us what's, what's happening.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, I just wanted to push back a little bit on, uh, Jay McCandless there. He said I was frantically or furiously, I can't remember what he said, texting. Would not say that at all, Jake. I would say I was measured and specific and I even had a little jocularity. Anyway. Hope somebody would laugh at that. Anyway, um, good news. Uh, I just want to, um, thank Steve Sewell and Matt McDermott's team for all that they're doing. Um, they're doing a great job of cleaning and organizing the school. Obviously, they work hard all year. Um, but as you know, the summer has its own set of tasks and it's a lot to do. Um, I just would like them to know, um, that we recognize all that they're doing and we appreciate their hard work. Uh, we're halfway through the summer and it's been pretty routine. We're updating handbooks, working on hiring, supporting teachers, we're updating curriculum and all other manner of things. Um, we had a number of teachers attend trainings to support our innovative pathways and advanced placement courses and uh, we're appreciative of their time and their commitment. Um, I was thinking, I, I knew that, uh, the, the folks at the other schools, the other administrators, we're gonna mention summer school or summer camps and I was like, wait a second, do we have anything? And I, and we did. Randy Coldus brought the school to life with a robust basketball clinic. There were a ton of kids and a number of our own students worked the camp, so it was great to see them. Um, with all those kids, I just wanna let everybody know the future continues to look bright for Monument Mountain Basketball. Uh, another thing that's been going on is we've, uh, submitted our bar grant proposal. We've received positive feedback and followed up to meet with folks from bar on revisions. Uh, as a reminder to everyone, this grant supports leadership positions within the high school, advisors for SOB, restorative justice, pardon me, restorative justice work and partnerships with consultants, all of whom have a positive impact on our trajectory and on our students. Uh, we will not know officially whether or not we receive the grant, um, until September, but we are feeling very positive about it. Other than that, it's summer. We're moving our work forward and preparing for the school year. The pace is obviously very different and the preparation is enjoyable. Our challenges are, are hiring. We've been able to fill a few positions, but we're still looking for qualified candidates for several other positions. Uh, Superintendent Dillon and during twists are doing their part with postings and repostings and casting the net as wide as possible. And while, um, we remain optimistic, uh, there is a little bit of anxiety there, so we'll keep you updated on that. But that's all I have today.
And, uh, thanks. So, uh, a couple of things at the district level and then we'll transition, uh, foreshadowing, things you're gonna bring up in our next meeting. Um, we're gonna talk at our next meeting, uh, about attendance. Uh, and things we're gonna try to do, uh, both in a, uh, really all in a supportive way to, to help, uh, young people around, around attendance. Uh, there, there's also the, the recent Supreme Court decision, the Mabu B Taylor case. Uh, and we've got some guidance about that and we're gonna come back and share some, um, thoughts and ideas, uh, uh, there. And then we'll tell you about this after we have, it makes sense to talk about it a little bit now. Uh, we're, uh, finishing up our planning for an, uh, administrative retreat on the eleventh and twelfth of, of August, uh, and that's what we'll be, uh, pulling together, updating our district improvement plans, mother stuff. And then, and then sharing that with you all at the event. So that's, that's some good stuff that's going on. Uh, the other thing, and that makes us the grant, we will send donations. Uh, we got some great news that, um, Berkshire United Way awarded us a fifty thousand dollar grant, um, which is a, a pretty significant increase from the, the previous year. Um, and, and, and that's particularly important because, uh, there's, there's some uncertainty with federal funds or the timing of federal funds. Um, uh, other philanthropic sources are really, uh, stepping up. So, so we really appreciate their support, uh, and partnership. Historically, uh, we've used those funds to support our, our after school and summer programs. Melissa.
Motion.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Motion.
Can I, can I just ask a question? It's, it's described as a unrestricted grant or for general authority purposes, maybe? But then it says we have to, uh, increase social and emotional learning. That sounds like it's restricted.
I mean, it's, it's something that is funny, social and emotional learning sort of became a politicized term.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but at, at its core, it's, it's, it's just foundational works. People in schools do all the time, right? You need kids where they are and you buy them supports to be successful. So, uh, I don't see this as a, as having a lot of strict attention to it.
And. Is it measurable? Uh, we, and I can demonstrate that there's been an increase in social and emotional.
Yeah, I mean, we, 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 we measure it on surveys, we measure it in terms of, uh, incidents and behavioral things. We measure it in terms of, um, um, how, how we track the services we support, the number of times we pull a crisis center. Uh, it, it's connected to, um, uh, suspensions and disciplinary action. Uh, and, and then sort of more generally, it's connected to the tone and feel of the, of the building. So if we're doing a good job, uh, all the, the complicated negative things go down and, and all the celebratory public things go away.
Thanks. Motion to accept the grant from Berkshire United Way in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Second. I have a discussion. During the night, Allison.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Andy.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I, your name is. Um, so the, the next one is a, uh, request for an overnight field presence with the girls cross-country team. Uh, and it's, it's sort of a neat break, the bottom line is Twilight Race in Fall of Man. That's on Friday, October twelfth. Um, and, and, uh, it, it's a neat one and it's, it's for elite teams. Uh, historically, Lennox, Raylock, and Don, uh, and we sent a couple of scooters, uh, last year. So we'd like, we were happy to respond to questions if you'd like to support us.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So we have, um, seven eighth graders participate on the, that's my team, correct?
Uh, we do.
Uh, they included in the overnight trip?
Um, I, I'm gonna defer to Christopher on this. I, I think typically you take seven runners and five are scoring runners. So I think it would be unusual for a seventh grader to be in the top seven. But Christopher, could you speak more specifically to that?
Yeah, um, well, you know, the information that I was given was that the entire team was, um, gonna, gonna, gonna go. And that there were a variety of events, so the entire team's going and seventh and eighth graders are part of the team. Imagine it's a, you know, a, um, permission from the parents and we take good care of all kids. So if the entire team's going, the seventh and eighth graders would be invited and we would take good care of them as well.
I feel like we, we so successfully, after many years of apprehension, incrementally moved into this integrating. And this wasn't, uh, a bridge that I contemplated when I voted approved the cross-country team, the seventh and eighth graders.
Uh, you know, the problem is, I, I understand what you're saying. The problem is, we said that they were part of the team. To exclude them as being part of the team for this doesn't seem right either. And how's it different than going to Philadelphia?
Because you're not sending a twelve-year-old to make it here.
But they're a check.
Yeah. Where are they staying?
Staying in a hotel. And I can imagine that we could make, um, you know, accommodations, uh, you know, they would have their own room or something like that. Um, we could start, and that's what I mean by taking care of them, you know? We, we understand that some attention needs to be, um, put on that and, uh, and that they're a different age and that there are some kids who are much older. Um, obviously our, our kids are great kids. We have a great cross-country team, a great culture there. But I, I could see having the middle schoolers separate rooms and, uh, with, uh, particular attention from chaperones, parents, et cetera. Obviously, it's not my decision, but I could obviously, um, put some things in place to make sure that we take, take care of them real well.
Is, Rich, is that aggressive or concerns?
Um, I, I mean, in my concern, I, I would see it like, I mean, you can go to a real dark place, my concern, but just culturally, you know what I mean? Like, is that like?
Jake, I think it was that.
Yeah, I, I could, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I, I think there's very few seventh graders on the cross-country team. Um, I can think of, and, uh, uh, maybe three eighth graders. And, uh, there, there may be one or two seventh graders. Um, you know, as, as a parent, who, all three of my kids ran cross-country, I, I always, I always wished that, that my kids could have started or I might have found the older cross-country kids to be great influences, uh, on, on my ninth graders when they started. So I, you know, this is one where I would say, um, they're going on this trip, they're gonna be asked to do something exhausting. Um, we have a, a really great coaching staff. And the, the parents of these, uh, athletes are in a great position to make the decision if they feel it's just not, you know, culturally developmentally appropriate for their kids.
That was, that was kind of my reverse too. I feel like that, that we're putting seventh, eighth graders, I mean, it's, I think it's, I, I will tell you, I know that the floodgates we thought were gonna open with seventh, eighth graders joining my sports didn't really come because there's a lot of apprehension around it.
Yeah.
I wonder if this creates more apprehension. Well, jeez, if I gotta go on, you know, if I gotta go be away from my parents for the first time in my life to punch these twelve-grade kids, um, it's not a new cross-country. You know, I, 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 I think it should be scary for some of the kids. It would have been scary for my old school. It would have been a reason for them not to do cross-country if they thought they were gonna have to go away with these big kids.
I didn't see that.
Uh, it just seems on, on a way, sports trip is a pretty unique and pretty advanced thing, you know? Um, uh, you know, I mean, we, we put kids on buses back from Nantucket this year, not doing overnight trip.
But I'm gonna assume, and I don't consider it, I think you say, that there have been or will be meetings with parents and their kids, and parents will be given the choice. Clearly not mandatory.
It's in a bad spot though, you know?
It, it does, but excluding all the kids, I don't know, somehow that puts them in a bad spot too.
It's just, well, I'm, it's, it's.
This is for both teams, correct?
No. This is a request from Scott Annan for the girls team.
Uh, it's a question. Many kids who participated in community-based youth athletics are doing overnights. The distinction though is the age ranges and like, it's wide, right?
The age range is my number of concern.
Right.
Those, there's usually, they're not, they're a high level of parents all that much true. I, an overnight basketball teacher for my daughter.
Right.
I was there. Um, and then I was pressed with the kids and the activities that was going on in the hall, hallways and seventh grade basketball teachers, so my kids.
Those are always impressed with some of the parents.
Yeah, they were that, they were that, they were that. I don't know.
Well, let's try this, let's see if we have a motion.
I make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have something?
Discuss.
Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt that part, but, um, I have a question about booster club stuff. And I don't know where we left the booster club question. But if this is part of the scheme though, why is the booster club paying for it?
Is it not a part of their regular schedule and it's not a budgeted? I like, this isn't in the budget. So if the booster club doesn't pay for it, the trip would happen.
But the buses aren't from the school.
Now, we don't pay for them. They shouldn't be paid for them.
No, they're all our buses.
They're taking our buses.
They're taking our buses, but we should be paying for them. It's not in the budget.
No, 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 like literally our, our little white.
Van. Van.
Right. Well, no, he actually says in there, we anticipate the two vans or a bus. If, if they're taking a bus, they're gonna have to pay for the bus. So if the vans are our vans, you're right.
Right. I just think we should revisit some things that are associated with some of the athletics. So that they're not always the booster clubs to follow. Because different booster clubs raise different amounts of money. And it would be different if the booster club were one giant organization for the school.
I agree.
But it's not that way and so I have for years questioned what the booster club pays for and what the school pays for. And I think in terms of like summer athletics, there are a million examples of like summer athletics that a football player might be part of that is open to every team, but takes place at the school and has a coach. And then booster club is asked to pay for that. I think I would really like to sit down with Carl and figure out what these things are and then budget them for next year if you need to. Or figure out how to better structure the club so that we can see these things coming. Not everything, but so that we have a policy that says, okay, this is a throw by who's.
There we go, policy, there's a public clear guidelines that are very clear, what's paid for, what's not.
There seem to be a lot of extra things though.
Yeah, there are. School district can't afford, every, if we decided to pay for trips, every team would be going on a trip. And we couldn't afford to do that. These are our budget one of last year.
But things that are considered part of either training for that sport or part of that season or or part of what's expected as part of that sport or an assistant coach, that kind of a thing? Each of those. Mine seems very great to me.
Yeah, and it is, it is. I, I will agree with you Diane. The, the coach part is, and we can revisit this, that's fine. The athletic director at the time and it, and I think Carl's also looked at him, said, this sport requires three coaches for safety and coaching. Invariably, either a booster club or one of the coaches said, oh, we need four, we need five. The district had made the decision that, that this is the number that are needed to be safe and to give good teaching. Parents and other coaches, yeah, it's great to have three more coaches, but there is a limit to what we can pay for. I, I think we could revisit the co-curricular guidelines and, and look at, you know, what we decide, but there isn't.
And there's this gray area, it has written, and there's just blank, blank areas and and, you know, the inequity of where the money is coming from for each sport, like it's, uh, you know, and then there's compliance issues, which is always gonna be, but, um.
I mean, we'll give it, yeah, but we talked about it. If you're on a team, of course the district's gonna pay for uniforms. But if they want warmups, that's, that's an extra. There's a bump in the act, the kids keep them when they're done, so the booster club pays for that. Now, some teams, despite the nature of the team, football, basketball, have robust booster clubs. Others where it's, especially in the spring, golf would be an example. Not a lot of spectators are on, it's harder to raise money. I, I, that is, that is a problem. We can look at the co-curricular guidelines again and be more specific. Let's have a quick play order. Are you speaking directly to the motion or should we?
I think the booster club funding, I think we got gendered, but booster club funding is, is, sorry.
Okay, I mean, if I were speaking, I mean, I'm wondering if, if, if it needs to be an agenda item to speak about it as a policy as opposed to this particular motion.
Yeah, we're fine.
I'm, I'm happy, that's why I'm, I'm interested.
I, I, I think that's a good idea.
The big.
And I'm happy to address that.
So what was getting like.
Have a motion in front of.
Well, we'll, we get into this.
And it will go down the Robert rules. We're gonna have a discussion.
We get into this when we talk about, uh, which will get our annual, uh, we need another soccer coach.
Yeah.
We need another football coach. We need another basketball coach. Um, and, and, and in my mind, I think we ought to really look at what Diane says. Maybe we need a booster club fund that, that we look at and that the booster clubs agree to contribute to. And, and it's, it's almost like when I remember the play, when the play got out of control. The booster club raised eighty thousand dollars for a play. Beauty and the Beast, my God, the committee went wild on this, on this, Peter remembered what it was like.
It was terrible.
And, and I think, you know, you talk about booster clubs out of control. I kind of see it, and Rich addressed this at a, at a meeting sometime early in the fall. I remember about the soccer coach. Who's paying for this? How many coaches? You have three that the school district pays for and then you have ten that the booster club pays for? Come on. I think there ought to be, it's almost like, come on, we're a public school, that education should be our, our, our focus, academics. You know, it's almost like, uh, Ohio State being run by the booster club.
So a couple, a couple things there. Few, a number of years ago, there was an attempt by the high school principal to form one booster club. And that felt flat on its face because the booster clubs that are very successful said, no, we're not doing that. Booster clubs, remember, are not part of the school.
Right.
They're, they're completely separate. So they had a buy-in. We couldn't make that. We would have, we could have. So the, the main booster club, so to speak, the ones that raised the most money because they had the most vans and they can sell the most food and do all that, said, no, absolutely not. Why would we do that? The ones that don't have as many vans because of the nature of the sport were in favor, so never. Were in favor, so never, never did work. I think what we should do. Is form a subcommittee again and look at code curricular guidelines, which we would, would be on. We meet with Carl, there'd be four of us, no more than four of us. And Carl and Christopher and whoever wanted to be on it. And really look at them again and answer those questions. School committee, then we can bring it to the school committee to change this, with the suggestions. Trying to go line by line through these guidelines, which, don't forget, we would also have co-curricular activities. So when Carl's in charge of code, but we would have someone from other co-curriculars on there too to help explain the question. But it's, I think we should do that. It's time to do it again. I agree with you. But I think the ultimate should come back here, it has to. But I think before it comes back here, should be looked at by a subcommittee.
It also seems very complicated that there's one fund to figure out what each team.
Absolutely.
You need to have actually an agenda and have stakeholders. Notify stakeholders here, that you've got a lot of people that are interested, obviously, because they're in funding involved.
We don't have.
If I have this conversation the way we're having it, when it wasn't on the agenda. No, I mean, yes, I agree with you. It needs to go through the, the subcommittee, that's great, form a subcommittee, post it. Invite people, push it, then bring it here, on the agenda, push it, that's right.
Let me ask this question. How, how much money does the girls?
Andy, I know there's a motion. If you wanna call it, go ahead. This is not how we act. Okay?
Um, so. Is the girls cross-country booster club the same as the boys, is it one booster club, the boys and the girls?
I honestly don't, Rich.
I don't, they seem a little more unified.
I, I, I believe it's two, but I think the bulk of their work is around. Uh, arranging snacks after home dates. So, and like.
Cause I will be honest, it's, I mean, I, I wanna back in the street again, but you know, we've had requests come before us with. The representation of the booster club is gonna pay for it, the booster clubs had no money. So like, I, I don't know the funding real, just to say the booster club, I don't know if there's real funding there and that.
You, do you wanna, um, sorry, I won't interject.
No, you're good.
I'm just wondering if there's questions on the table that need to be answered. I don't, I don't wanna delay a process. I don't wanna interject myself into. School committee business, but um, if there's questions you need answered, I can get them answered and we can bring this back on August fourteenth.
Is there urgency to this, Christopher, like?
Season's over, but.
Uh, I, I think we're just trying to get ahead of that, which is good.
The coaches are doing that.
And I would request again, as I have a hundred times, the director of athletics appears before us when we have an issue with it. Since he's full-time, and it's nothing personal of him, but why would Carl have to answer the questions?
Yeah, Carl, he had a, Carl had a pre, um, a pre-scheduled, um. Vacation and, you know, I talked to Peter about it and I said, Peter, is it okay if I present this? And so here I am.
So, and, and to be fair, I'm raising all these questions and I, I didn't, I didn't ask you.
So a motion, I would draw a.
I.
I would draw a motion.
I am, I'm happy to pass this. I just wanted to make sure that we talked about booster clubs.
Uh, we'll, we'll talk later on and get a petition before the, for our committee to do some.
I'm pleased to sideline this for the girls and I. Happy to pass this.
You, you got my mind thinking about, now my concern about the booster club issue, which I wasn't really focused on until you brought it up, and now I.
I think that's what you can feel, that we could resolve otherwise, and this is like a.
I mean, I don't think seventeen day theaters should be put on a bus. Not even a bus, a, a van driven by a teacher with other kids and go to some other end of the state. I, I don't.
I think.
My kid, I love this district, I, I put anything, I would, I would send the kid a trip.
So one of the things I think we need to look at as a whole, that this has come up in the process. Years ago, not that few years ago, the booster club would have also been here. To say, yes, we're in favor of this. We've also had opportunities where booster clubs were asked to do something and I found that after we said, yes, the booster club didn't know about. Like, we didn't agree to this.
Yeah.
So the booster club is a separate organization of very hardworking parents. Who should also have, be a stakeholder of this. Because we're not only agreeing to do this trip, we're asking the booster clubs to pay for it, or agreeing to let them pay for it. More than once, booster clubs have said, we really didn't agree to that, we don't have the money.
And on the other hand, booster clubs did things that we weren't aware of, like the scoreboard in the baseball field, correct Steve?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they, they just put it up. Without our help.
So, so let's do two things. We can vote on this tonight, that's fine. We'll put an agenda item next time. Code curricular guidelines, Andy's correct, we'll put on that, we'll form a subcommittee. And we'll, we'll start working on it. For all that, subcommittee of school committee members, we'll get volunteers from booster clubs. Both co-curricular and sports to read and go over this, and there's no urgency, let's do it right.
Yeah.
If it takes six months to do it. Yeah, it takes a while, everyone's busy. Let's do this right. It's a good, the guidelines are good. We just may need to put some more teeth into them or put some more explanation into them.
Are, are. Do you wanna come back? Because there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of unanswered questions on this and I, but no one's called. Do we wanna vote on this now or do you wanna vote on it in two weeks?
Does Christopher have the answers?
Christopher, yeah, I don't know, I think Christopher.
I don't, so one of the questions, Rich, that you, that you, um. That you asked was, you know, is this a, a robust, uh, booster club that can afford these kind of things? I don't know. Um, you know, what is the provision for the seventh and eighth graders? I don't know. Uh, currently, I don't know, so.
The, the way it's written, it's the booster club and or the parents.
Yes.
Uh. So I, I don't know if that, if that's.
Motion to table, not available. Oh, you're true.
Yeah.
Did you consent to the trial?
I didn't.
I said, I just dug it.
Uh, I'll, it was wrong, Charles' fault. Alright, so we will put this on the agenda. Whatever, it's, we're having three weeks.
Three weeks.
Yeah, I hope, it filled us up.
Uh, is that gonna be a problem in terms of signing up for this week? I mean, is there urgency to getting this going, um, if we wait three weeks, are we gonna miss the?
I mean, it's, it's, it's three months, I don't know.
So let's say this, if in fact, there is an issue, the one good thing is we could have a very fast Zoom meeting. And, and schedule it in a week or an hour, and with this being the only topic.
Yeah.
I mean, we won't jeopardize the kids and adults. We, we've never done that, we won't do that, so Bill, it's a good point. I mean, the deadline's tomorrow.
Right, well, I. But I, but I think Rich is right, it's three months away or something.
Or, or tentatively register with the hope that. If all the questions are answered, you prove it in the.
I mean, I don't wanna speak for the committee, I don't hear. Other than Rich, I'm not criticizing, I don't hear anybody screaming, we can't do this. We just have questions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the questions aren't on, on this, they're, they're actually overriding the booster club.
Well, they are, it's all.
There are specific ones that Rich raised, I had to intercept it. Yeah, very reasonable questions.
Right. I may have a motion, when the motion is removed, I may have a motion again, and it does make a difference, we can get that next week.
Okay, let's move ahead. Okay, so the, uh, next thing, in the packet, there's a little update on Clio. Um, um, JP put this together talking with Cynthia and I. Uh, I, I, I think it's fairly straightforward. I'm sharing this mostly as a follow-up to our last meeting when somebody or many of you asked me. Uh, to, to come back with, with the plan. Um, so, um, um. This is, uh, this is the plan, the, the only place where I anticipate. Uh, there may be some concerns is we're having, we're allowing. Faculty and staff children to be dropped off at seven thirty-five and. Non-staff children to be dropped off at eight. Uh, I, I understand there'll be an inconvenience for some non-staff children, but the point of having staff children. Be dropped off earlier so those staff can meet their, their work obligations and. Teach and support other people's kids.
Although I do this, my only concern is we're putting Cynthia back in the same position she was in last year. My point was having to say no to people, people.
But, but she inherited several exceptions and Cynthia is ready to go with the email tomorrow. Saying, this is what we're doing, um, uh, when school starts a month from now. You have a month notice to, to make your schedule work, right? But, but we talked about that quite a bit.
Thank you.
Sure.
I would say, once again, with these, the evolution with the Clio program and this. The way that they prepare their written product, the school committee is great. Always like clear and understanding, you know, it's like, you read the memo and you know what it is.
Cool, cool.
Very, very well done by, by JP and everyone, the people of the office.
I'm just happy that drop-off is gonna be in the, uh, back of the school, not the front, with the very dangerous intersection with the. Middle school kids dropping off, right, at eight o'clock or a little before, and so they have, in both, they're both entering and exiting the middle school from the same. Access point and they were doing it the same at the elementary school, which is horribly dangerous last few years. So the fact that we can fully eliminate any exiting, most entering from the elementary school. Um, cause again, a lot of high school kids are dropping off their, their siblings, a lot of experienced drivers, so I was really happy to see. Uh, anyone being dropped off, uh, is gonna go, uh, the miser drop off, there's, there's a separate entrance that I, I mean, it's gonna be a lot. Safer, we're gonna avoid a certain accident was gonna happen on the list.
Okay, well, thanks, you're the one that made that suggestion. So there you go. Uh, but I mean, it's a, it's a really good example of like people bringing up things and us making adjustments, so I'm happy about that.
I think, uh, when Jay retires from the school committee, there's gonna be a statue out front, but the drop-offs are.
Stuck in the problem very strong. We're right in the middle of the road. Parking czar.
Parking czar, yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm really thinking how far we've come, right?
Yeah.
With those extra parking spots, the lanes changed, it's not as complicated to turn. People aren't queuing up for the middle school all the way out to Route seven. Um, with those flashing lights emboldishing the high school, a lot going on.
Bill Fields, then the chair of the building's not for less than a year, got his arm. Goes over there.
Okay, so, so the next one actually came this over to, uh, Phil and Andy and Allison, but it's, it's the superintendent's. Evaluation, there's a, a copy of it in, in the packet. And Bill, how many meetings do we have? Five or six?
About five, I can't.
Yeah, um, so Phil can talk you through it, respond to process things or, or any questions?
Um, you can, first of all, thanks to Andy and Allison. And to Peter for cooperation and showing, um. If you ran through this, I think the, the important page on this, uh, is rather complicated reporting. It's page two, which is overall summative performance. And the, uh, as you'll see, it's exemplary. Um, and the commentary, I'll just read the comments, because I think it captures the key points of this. And it's Dr. Billingsworth was seen as exemplary. His performance against his three stated goals was overall exemplary, by the way, the three stated goals were. To lead the MSBA project, to support the three principals, and to support the shift in communication. Um, the performance against his three stated goals was overall exemplary, in particular credit. To the superintendent of the building project, which was time consuming. The principals hiring and onboarding were, continue to be extremely positive for the district. Continue or not continues. Um, all three principals have made great starts in their current jobs. Communication and community outreach have improved significantly. Response to ICE's impact has been sensitive and supportive of immigrant families and was well received. Superintendent lead a state coalition supporters to back impacted families and students. Um, I mean, any of us are, are happy to answer questions on specific aspects of, um. Peter's job, his performance. Um, that is an attempt to capture it and one paragraph. Um, overall, uh, there are no deficiencies, there are no unsatisfactors. There are a few coefficients and mostly exemplary boxes ticked, I think for good reason. Happy to answer the questions. Or, and if you have comments, Allison, if I add, if anything.
Any comments?
We could believe, vote with the opinion of the evaluation or not?
Or accept it?
We won't accept.
I'm moved that we accept this for attendance, uh, violation.
Second, other discussion. Roll call, Allison.
Yes.
It's.
I.
Andy, I, still.
Yes.
Bill, yes, Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Hi.
Rich.
Yes.
And I.
Uh, one thing I will share, Andy, Allison and I talked about this, uh, going forward, we're gonna work on. Um, uh, coming up with a structure to maybe look at in every other year's cycle. Um, get some additional stakeholder feedback. Uh, we thought it was important to do that from. The start of the year, not in the middle of the year, so, uh, maybe our next. Uh, evaluation advisor committee will look at a couple models to do some like surveys or three sixty feedback thing. Uh, getting some additional feedback from, uh, the administrators, the principals, uh, and perhaps. Staff, students, families, or some combination. Um, okay, and, and thanks for the, the subcommittee, for your help on that. Uh, the, the MSBA, uh, stuff continues to chug along. Uh, uh, we, we, as you know, submitted the big packet, uh, there's a meeting with the MSBA. Uh, coming up first, a sort of smaller one, we'll give us some feedback and ask some questions and then a more formal. Uh, board meeting, so, um, that, that's where things stand now. Uh, another thing, and I'll send it around, and everybody's seen it, uh, they did an aerial. Like, projection of the building that's in video form. Um, and, and so from the outside and then also from spaces within the building. Uh, and they're working on two versions of it, one would be narrated and one would be without sound. Uh, and, and I'll, I'll send that around. We don't have the narrated version yet or even the script, but, uh. Uh, it, it, it's really interesting to see the grounds, the building in, in. A virtual three-dimensional diagram.
You're, so what is the MSBA actually about to improve the project?
Um, let's check. Um, sorry, it was twenty-seven, I think that's right.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, that's great, August twenty-seventh. Uh, so, a couple fine-tuning, fine-tuning, um, um. And other things back and forth, and a couple sort of conversations about if, if this space is included or not.
Yeah, no, it's fierce.
Yeah. Coming up soon.
Yeah, no, I, I remember it, it's about, they played out.
Do you have anything to add?
No, it's kind of a calm before the final storm here, you know, with the MSBA hopefully approval and. Final question will go on November fourth, so, um, I will take a deep breath and raise the schedule on that.
Yeah. Anything else? Got a next update, the last one, or they're about to run this again, is the belonging and safety, so. Um, at, at our next meeting, uh, we'll be bringing, uh, updated handbooks from each of the schools and, and those will. Uh, reflect our merging or, or evolving work, uh, to make sure all students are very supported. It will also be. Uh, responsive to some degree to the, uh, the retailer, ruling, uh, and, and implications, which. Everybody's trying to make sense of, that's just in our district, but in every, every school in the country. Uh, um. Yeah, we're really looking forward to, to getting ready to welcome people, um, back to school. Uh, uh, our, it connected is sort of the, all over the place, but the food insecurity thing and the food box program and, and that's. Uh, that's coming along, uh, nicely as well. Yeah, we're really looking forward to, to getting ready to welcome people, um, back to school, um, uh, our, it, it connected is sort of the, it's all over the place, but the food security thing, and the food box program, and, and that's, uh, that's coming along, uh, next week as well.
So, we just reported, Paul, let's get us down there, the buildings are ground.
Coming up, yeah.
Superintendent's evaluation we just heard from, by name of supplementing?
We have not met, but we're gonna meet on the twenty-eighth, subject to chair's approval, so you're nodding, uh, before our regular meeting at five o'clock, and we'll set our calendar and agenda for the, for the next budget session, Pat. So, everyone's always welcome to finance.
It all begins here.
All begins again, we're gonna push that rock right back up the hill.
I know, I know. Negotiations, but not, sorry.
Right, but, but this is a contract year for a couple groups, so the negotiations committee could, uh, um, start meeting, or, or maybe after the high school vote.
I was just gonna say, we know we're not gonna be able to do it until November fifth.
Right, um, but, but that's on the, on the, uh, on the horizon.
I mean, policy should start meeting too, but it's just, it's just not adequate to deal with top of all.
No, I, I, I think I may, um, the next meeting with a, a few updates on policy, um, recommend by our.
Should still go through the policy.
Okay, but, but we've got, I visit three, three minutes between now.
Yeah, no, that's fine, it's, it's typical.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah, lots of good, you have a personnel report?
Uh, yeah, so a long personnel report, largely because of a lot of, um, uh, summer things, uh, um. Cynthia mentioned the new for grade teacher, Vanna, and we're excited to welcome her, um, and then almost all the other stuff is summer stuff, uh, we're, we're losing a biology teacher at high school, I Jamie Gamm, Eric, who's, uh, and, or good for her, not so good for us, uh, going back to her hometown, uh, to teach there, and that's hard to, that's hard to afford, yes, um, but I think that's it.
Business operations, with just a reallocation of funds, Jared, Steve?
Really, uh, Steve, so, I'll just set it up, Steve, and then you can talk with it, there's a, a memo in the packet that Steve put together, uh, and, and, uh, re-allocated two sets of expenses, uh, one from the FFA, which is the Future Farmers of America account, uh, to support a storage barn, and, and then the other to move previously allocated funds, um, to cover some other costs, so I'll let Steve speak to the details, it's better on the land.
So the first, the first one regarding the FFA, we had a storage barn here, the greenhouse facility, a part of the greenhouse facility that was built on center blocks, that care, probably helping for the high schools here. And we walked in, and there was a big crack in the center block wall, that was holding up basically a barn, and the center blocks had shifted a pathway, so it was just a matter of time before it was gonna come down, so we had to get everything out, prevented people from going in and breaking down, and put up a, basically a bottom building, uh, concrete pad, so that should last us a long time. Everybody's happy with it, took a lot of time, and ended up with a poor contractor, let's say, that ended up breaking ties, would have been about somebody else, that's, that's the details of that, and we're looking to transfer forty-two thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars that was taken out of capital fund accounts, and did that, and take it out of that FFA account. Re-allocate, and the FFA account prior to that has almost five hundred ninety thousand dollars. Second one, do you wanna vote on that thing, do you want to separate it?
Accept.
We don't have to, it was.
No, that, you don't, so the second one, we had allocated some money to replace the chiller, put the bid out, we only got one bid, and it was considerably higher than what we had funded it. Um, so, I threw out a bid, and we're gonna address that in due turn, in the meantime, I had a lot of things, basically stopped working, that needed to be repaired, a geothermal well pump was one, um, gonna install a new management system for the middle school, the geothermal system, and the boiler room, the headroom, um, replace some more heat pumps. And then, just to kind of continue to build out the communication cards in the geothermal system in the middle school, and if there's any money left over, as I make that reported to you all, classroom lights in both of the twenty-year-old buildings are pretty much a computer system, and they're starting to fail, so they need to be wholesale replaced. So really, uh, I budgeted this year, I think, for five rooms in each building, and to kind of keep plugging away at it. So that.
We need fixtures, we.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, fixture, and the, the whole time wall.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about how, one of the nice things about replacing the fixtures, is it like some like old technology that needs.
Yeah, the, the new ones are LED, they're also, the ones that we're replacing are very similar to this, so they hang down into the classroom, you don't really can notice them, like, walking to the classroom, getting pretty used to seeing that, like, to one of the ones we've redone, they're actually up in the sealed path, and they're kind of reset up in there, so it makes the whole look quite a bit bigger, in a very strange way, it's just definitely, you didn't notice it, which I never thought you would have, and Peter's point, relatively nice, they're about a one-tenth of the energy consumption versus what we had, so to run that should be pretty short-lived, but they're bad, they'll get away unfortunately.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the reallocation of funds as set forth in the memo dated July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second, any other discussion? Thank you. Well, I'm wearing a vote again. Allison?
Yes.
Jason?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And I, Jean. Now, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any old or new business before the committee? All the comment?
And, and for public comment, if somebody has one, you can just click the raise hand button, and then we'll recognize it.
By your own consent, you are heard, thank you, thank you.